Dr. Will Becker?
Here.
I'm McDonald.
Here.
Betty Martine.
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell.
Here.
And Lynn.
Here.
I'm former mayor.
Wonderful. I want to welcome everybody to our regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council. With all meetings, will please join in a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Now please rise and join us in the same of the pledge allegiance to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is, after the pack it was put together, the consideration of adding item G to the agenda for Call Valley Engineering Services. I'd like a motion to add that agenda to, or add that item officially to our agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve adding item G to the agenda.
Second? I have first and second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is our consent agenda. We have a third fireworks sales application on the consent agenda. Again, just want to remind everybody, the city can approve up to four each year, which this makes number three. Far Hall's working again with the Bel Air Lions Club, so that is there along with the minutes of the March 1st council meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have appropriations ordinance 16-06 in the amount of $413,192.43.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. McDonald? I make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance, ordinance 16-06.
Second.
At first and second, questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And city requested appearances. Going to move down to the podium. I'd like to invite Taylor Hoffman to join me. All right, Taylor, come on up here. This is not that scary. How you doing?
Good.
All right, I want to introduce you. This is our Bel Air City Council, as I told you about when we were up in Topeka a few weeks ago. And I was glad to join you in the League of Kansas Municipalities and your parents. I see you're here tonight. Just want to congratulate you, on behalf of the city, for winning this region if I were mayor contest. And just let everybody know, there were almost, what, about 6,000 of these essays submitted to the league. And out of our region, we had a seventh grader from Sunrise right here in Bel Air who won out of this region. So he got to go to Topeka and accept that award. His entire class went with him, which I thought was pretty neat. I thought it'd be a good chance to come meet the city council and, because I know, you know, I'm going to need to step down in a few years and you'll be ready, right?
(laughing).
Okay. See, he says yes. And what I really thought, what was really neat about just meeting this young man and his class was hearing from seventh graders that know what's going on in City Hall and that know what all is involved in civics and in running a city. And I thought it was neat listening to meeting some of the other regional winners, some of the things that were important to you, police, safety, roads, parks, those types of things. So, again, on behalf of the Bel Air City Council, I want to congratulate you again. And to know if you wanted to say any words, we'd let you do that. You're going to be shy, are you?
(laughing).
Are you really? Okay. You know we're on TV, so I'm gonna, no words. All right. All right, round of applause for Taylor Hoffman. And I'm going to sign. So we'll let you be our community cares winner this month. We'll get that up on the website. But I want to present these to you, as well as just a few to, you can take them, it's okay.
(laughing).
Well, with a few tokens, here is a Bel Air city coin. I want to give you a little pen. I know someday, when you're wearing your sports coat and up here and everything, and then I want, I'm going to come in and check. I want to make sure you're wearing this every day. Here's your Bel Air bracelet that all the kids are wearing today, right? So, all right, congratulations. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have a proclamation. Sedgwick County operates the RSVP. That's the Senior Corp Program for Volunteers to assist communities in a number of ways. The volunteers who live in Bel Air that are part of this program provide, you ready for this, 1,971 hours of service, which totals an economic impact of over $42,000 in our communities. So, want to go ahead and read this proclamation. Sedgwick County RSVP Senior Corps National Service Proclamation to the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas. Greetings. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation's cities and counties are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet county needs. And whereas participants in AmeriCorps and Senior Corps address the most pressing challenge across our nation, from educating students for jobs of the 21st century, supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our county's economic and social well-being. And whereas more than six Sedgwick County RSVP National Service participants resided in Bel Air, they provide vital support to residents in improving the quality of life in Bel Air and Sedgwick County. And whereas National Service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct services and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas National Service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars, including more than $42,658 in Bel Air, Kansas, and Sedgwick County. And whereas National Service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Services shares a priority with the city and county officials nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, National Association of Counties, Cities of Service, and mayors and county officials across the county for the Mayor and County Recognition Day for National Service, and that's on April 5th. Therefore, be it resolved that I, David Austin, Mayor of Bel Air, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 5th as National Service Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community and thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities. So it's always fun to read and officially sign these proclamations, which I've done, so, going with that. At this point, we'll go ahead and open up the meeting to citizens' concerns. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address council tonight that's not on the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to reports. I have just a couple of very, very brief items. Want to remind everybody, Saturday is the Spring Festival, so everybody come on out for that at the Bel Air Rec Center. Lots of Easter eggs and bouncy soccer balls or whatever we're going to do. It's going to be lots of fun. Looks like there's not going to be any rain, might be a little chilly, but it'll be in the afternoon. It'll be okay. So do look forward to seeing everybody from noon to 4:00 out at the Rec Center. And the second thing, and this is something that is so exciting to share with council, because this is, we've done this a few times now since we've been together as a body. On May 1st, we're going to pay $725,000 in additional principal, along with our regularly scheduled Easter egg hunt, to pay down.
(coughing).
And that is something that is exciting that I wanted to share with everyone. And that's the end of my report. We'll go ahead and move. I forget which way do I go this time. We'll start with Councilmember Martine.
Well, I don't have too much. I did attend the senior lunch yesterday at Carriage Crossing. There was like 23 seniors from the senior club that went. Some of us went shopping afterwards and they all had a very good time. The food was good. Had homemade chicken and noodles. And on the 24th, I'm alternate for CCUA and I'll be gone in that meeting.
Okay.
That's all.
Councilmember Lynn?
Well, I've been busy.
Good.
I, on the 10th, I visited the Planning Commission. The meeting was a little more formal than what I expected, because they all set up around here and they have their nameplates and what have you. But I had commented on, when I was walking in, that everybody was on time, you know, which is kind of unusual sometimes for the council members. Even for our workshops and things, we're not always on time. The topic that they were talking about was a soon-to-be new citizen being allowed to keep farm animals on his property. So it was an interesting subject and lots of questions and that type of thing. And just introduced myself and I kind of, they kind of acted like they'd never had a council member visit before. So, just saying. And then on Saturday, I attended the SCAC meeting at the Wichita Historical Museum. And there were two presentations. There were 18 to 20 people there and there was some coming and going, so I gave it a range, kind of thing. But representation from a lot of the surrounding area, so well-represented, and as well as the city of Wichita. The first presentation was by a gentleman from the Cedric County Emergency Management. His first name was Rick, but I didn't catch his last name. But he outlined all the types of emergencies that they plan for, you know, I mean, we all know tornadoes, fires, those kinds of things. But he's got a whole list and they offer that service to cities. So I don't know whether Bel Air has a formal emergency preparedness plan or not, but they also recommend going over that at fairly frequent times. So I, that was just more information that I gleaned from that. Then the second speaker was Tom Stoltz, who was formerly with the Wichita Police Department. And a few years ago, he was chosen to combine the city of Wichita and the county building and planning and controls and inspection and all of those departments that go into that. And so he was kind of talking about how they were doing. They will finally be moving into their new building. There's still not a final date, but it should be this year, soon, sooner than this year, hopefully soon. And then all of those departments permitting and all of that will be in the same building. And I can tell you from working for a developer many years ago, that will be very helpful to people who are dealing with that kind of thing. You know, we have our own department out here doing inspections and some things like that, but they're also open to communication with that and, you know, working with that if we have some issues along that line. When they do move into the building, it will be the completion of a five-year plan in three and a half years. So that kind of tells you. I mean, Tom, of course, is still a little bit of a policeman, (laughing) but, you know, it's moving along very well. So I think that's good for Cedric County and, you know, all around. That's all I have.
Wonderful. Appreciate you being able to cover that. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I just want to wish everyone, if you're on spring break like me, happy spring break, because it was much, much needed. And I also, I will not be here Saturday, so I won't be able to help with the Easter egg hunt, but take lots of pictures. And thank you for going Saturday. I was at my forensics meeting for my girls' qualified for nationals, so even though I couldn't go to that, it was a wonderful trade-off. And I just wanted to give some fun news. If you like basketball, which, you know, go Shockers tonight. My husband's a diehard Shocker fan. I'm diehard KU, so we're both pretty excited. There is a national story out on Buddy Heald, who's our Sunrise graduate and some of the others. It's a really good story. And since it has hit, Dr. Lindstedt said he has had call after call after call, people wanting to know where is Bel Air, where's the school, you know, what is the housing like there? So I was really positive. And he said, he was-
We have houses for sale.
I told him to push when people call. We have lots of houses. But he said it was pretty exciting to get Bel Air on the map, although we already have been. But I meant just to have people from other states calling and checking out the school and asking about it. And I told him, push, push, push houses. Yes, we have lots. So, yeah, that was exciting. So, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting this past week, and their speaker was part of Homeland Security, and he covers the entire state of Kansas, and he's an outstanding speaker. And he covered all the possible difficult situations that they have to deal with. And one of the facts that he said, you know, on these terrorist attacks in this country where people shoot each other, he said, does anybody know, you know, what, you know, what the percentage of types of people that do this? It turns out that more than 90% are white males who have some kind of problem. And then he went into the types of things that they can do. After the, after the meeting, I went up to speak to him and I said, we do not have a sergeant-at-arms in our, in our court, in our council meetings. And I said, I know that in the House of Representatives, there have been violent scuffles, and that's the reason that they have sergeant-at-arms. And I think the same thing is taking place in the Senate, I mean, the United States Senate and the United States House of Representatives. So I spoke with Ty, and I think he was, he's looking into the matter to see what, you know, what can be done. But I think it would be a good thing just to have someone here as a member of the police department who could take care of any difficulties that may occur. Now, I haven't had any occur in my tenure here, but you never can tell. And I also asked him, I said, since we don't have one and then someone comes in and does violent damage in, you know, to the council, he said, I said, what, you know, what will happen? He said, I would deem that you are responsible for that, because you have not taken proper precautions to prevent that kind of event from taking place. And that will, and my comments, perhaps Mr. Lasher can expand on that further.
Definitely something to, thank you for that. Councilmember Becker?
Well, it is the Ides of March.
(laughing) Yes, it is.
So I hope we get through the meeting okay tonight. I've always enjoyed, for some reason, ever since I was in high school and studied literature, the Ides of March has always seemed very intriguing to me. And I've thought of that quite often today. And I'm sure we'll have a great meeting tonight with no problems. (laughing) I also attended that chamber meeting for the first time, and I really did enjoy it. And I was really impressed with all the members of the chamber that attended. And it was a very instructional meeting. I thought we, educational, I should say. We really learned quite a bit there. And need to be aware of those things, think about them, and be planning. That's the big thing, he said. Everybody needs to have a plan. And I think we fall into that category, too. So that was wonderful to join them. And then I'm just going to remind everybody briefly again about the Easter egg hunt. The Easter egg hunt itself for the kids will be at 2:30. Now, the event is going to be from 12 to 4:00, and we hope there's not rain. It might be a little bit chilly that day, but, you know, just put on a sweater and come on out and enjoy all the fun. And that bubble soccer is really going to be quite interesting. That's something we haven't done before. And then we'll have food and face painting and the Easter bunny and all the usual things that are so exciting at this time of the year. So I just want to remind everybody again, 2:30 for the Easter egg hunt. So have all the kids out to our recreation center that afternoon to get, have some fun gathering up the eggs. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We'll move down to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I received an email just last week from zipia.com, Z-I-P-P-I-A.com. It's a site that's devoted to careers. And it looked at, or they looked at cities in Kansas and ranked the top 10 smartest cities in Kansas. And Bel Air came in at number seven. So-
Sorry, I just got to mention-
The smartest cities in Kansas.
Why are you asking surprises?
Yep.
Well, because we're not number one.
I was surprised we weren't number one. But, yeah, we came in number seven. So that's kind of fun. And we're going to put this out on the website and stuff. But most of them were up around the Johnson County area, obviously bigger cities and stuff. But that's kind of fun. It's kind of a neat way to market our community. And so, but it also says that if you look at our, at our demographics, that we do have a large portion that have college degrees or master's degrees, things like that, or at least high school education. That's what's a big part of it, that the majority have at least that. So, anyway, that was interesting, so I thought I'd share. And that's all I had, Mayor.
Wonderful.
May I add something on to that? Something else I've always noticed and been very proud of. When you look at the statistics, the city of Bel Air is also one of the most diverse cities of our size in the whole state. And it was the most diverse last time I looked, and I imagine it still is. So I think we can really be proud of that, too. That's a very neat thing.
Excellent point. Thank you. All righty. Going to move on into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. The first thing before council is a consideration of approving the citizen survey engagement proposal from Wichita State University. The council hired PEC and Law Kingdom to create a master development plan for the city. We did that quite a while ago, actually. And this kind of goes hand in hand with that. The WSU engagement proposal goes along with that development plan as it engages Bel Air citizens to share their vision for the growth of Bel Air. This proposal creates focus groups and ultimately a survey to gather public input in a number of areas, such as social media growth, but mainly priorities and the budget. Wichita State has completed this same type of activity for the city of Wichita and has done it for a lot of other communities. Deanna is here from WSU to explain the proposal and answer any questions the council might have. If you'd like to come forward and see, you know, something we've kind of been talking about for a few months now. And I'll say, a lot of people might say, you know, the, the amount is $19,525. To, just like to point out, we have not done anything like this in almost, what, eight or nine years. In my opinion, this is, and I would hope that council go along to, we want to do is we want to have citizens' input and have, you know, scientific research, but also this, you know, as we're paying down debt and moving forward, this is a good thing to know what our citizens want, which is why I invited you here tonight. So if you'd like to talk a little bit about the proposal, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, city manager and staff and members of the audience. So first of all, I'd like to say, go Shocks! (laughing). My name is Deanna Carruthers. I'm the Director of Operations for Wichita State University, and I serve in the capacity of support for the Public Policy and Management Center. We are here this evening to discuss a community survey for the city of Bel Air. The proposal is a three-pronged approach that, I believe, was in your packet as well. So if I could walk you through the steps, the first step is the pre-survey engagement. So what we'd like to do is-
Speak up a little bit. I'm so sorry. If I could ask you-
You'd better move that mic in front of her down a little bit, so it catches her.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
I have, I will treat this like my Sunday school-
There you go.
-class. A little more bass, a little more energy, a little more light. Okay. Yes, ma'am. I'll make sure we get that taken care of. So the first step in the process is the pre-survey engagement. And the pre-survey engagement will be based upon work that we do with the design team or the project management team. The project management team will be comprised of this city manager and any other designees that he would dedicate to the process. What we do is we would conduct six to eight informed stakeholder groups, or focus groups. In other words, we'd get a group of people of up to eight to 15 together to discuss concerns, things that are going well, things that, opportunities for improvement as it relates to the city. So it really is a brainstorming opportunity, but also an opportunity for dialogue and engagement to hear, again, what's going well, and then also what opportunities were, there exist for improvement. Because as coming into this city, there are so many amazing things that are happening here. I'm like, when I grow up, I'd like to live here someday. And so, just-
Like I've said, there are houses for sale.
As soon as I stop being a student and my husband stops being a student, I would be loved to get that work. So, so that's the pre, step one, the pre-survey engagement. Again, it's all about bringing people to the table, making sure that everybody feels like they're a part, because again, this, this community belongs to all of us. And step two is the community survey development. Once we receive information from the focus groups and say what's going well, that's going to inform us. And then from there, we'll sit down with the project team and we'll start to design the survey, based upon the priorities that we hear. So the kinds of questions are, well, we want, you know, for example, you might want bike paths, but you also may look at other economic development opportunities. In a perfect world, we give the best to our citizens, but we can't afford them all. So what are those competing interests and how do we identify those? And this survey is intended to help you make those decisions. And as a part of those, as part of the survey development, we'd also do, help you with the communication plan, because again, we cannot be successful without our citizens. We have to have them at the table. We need to have them respond to the survey. We need to have them be as open and transparent in the process. And you, our council, will be our biggest advocates for helping this process be successful. Step three in the survey is the survey assessment. So it'll be a paper survey that will be mailed and citizens can send it back. And so we'll have postage available on the mailer so they can, there's no charge, then just turn it in. But for those who may not be comfortable with sending something in the mail, we'll do follow-up calls as well and say, hey, we'll, it won't be a robo-call, it will be a graduate assistant. And so they earn their keep at the Hugo Wall School. So we're looking at a multifaceted approach to make sure we have stakeholder engagement. And so that will be step three in the process. So once we mail the surveys and then make follow, make follow-up calls, we hope to get at least a- mail the surveys and then make follow-up calls, we hope to get at least a 20% response rate. And that may seem a little low, but that is the average... that's actually a good average for the size of your community. So we're looking at receiving approximately... You're approximately 7,200 from reading on your website, the population, so we'd send out about 2,500 and then see what we could do to increase the response rate. Lastly, as a part of this survey, once we receive things back, WSU will be responsible for coding, and coding is meaning that how does the data interpreted. As a neutral facilitator, our responsibility is to make sure that there's integrity in the process, and so make sure that things are secure and that the data is only handled by statisticians and the faculty and the staff that are assigned to the project. So all of the information would be in a confidential area. So after we finish that component, which is the major step in the process, we provide a written report to the council summarizing the findings and summarizing the results. And again, from there, hopefully that will be a decision-making tool for you to be able to be successful in finding out what Suzie Q. or Joe Smith, who may not come to a council meeting, thinks about the community. And a lot of times, one of the things I think that people are missed about is a lot of times things, for example, if things are not going well, you hear a lot of that, but there are a lot of citizens who obviously love being here, and obviously are the smartest from what we heard earlier, and so who wouldn't want to live here? With that, so this will provide an opportunity and forum to hear from voices that are often heard, voices that are not heard as often, and from those who never heard from at all. With that, I will stand for questions. If you have questions about the project team, they're also listed. We have Misty Bruckner, who is the Director of the Public Policy and Management Center, who has 15 to 20 years of experience in community engagement. We have Dr. Mark Glazier, assigned to the project, who has 30 to 40 years of doing community engagement, and actually recently received an award. And also, we have Corinne Bannon, who serves as the Community Research Manager, who will also be working with the graduate students as well, and she's been trained in this field work as well. With that, I will stand for questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In your opinion, how long do you think this process will take? And you've done it many times, and I know it will vary depending upon several factors, but I'd like to hear an answer to that.
Oh, sure. Absolutely, sir. Every survey that we do is unique, and that is tailored to the needs of the computer... the community. So it can be as robust as we would like it to be. My understanding is that the City Manager would like to have some type of data and some type of information available for the budgeting process, if I'm correct. And so typically, a process will take several months, six to nine months, but I know that depending upon how we orient the survey, we will have... you'll have results this year, but just a matter of how the will of the council and the will of the City Manager.
Thank you very much.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
First off, I want you to know that I am in favor of this. I think it's long been needed, but I have a couple of concerns. One, as I was reading through the proposal as it was presented, I always have a little bit of a problem with surveys, because oftentimes they either have kind of a leading type of thing, or there aren't enough choices to actually give the answer that you want. Even none of the above is a choice.
Sure.
And so I guess I'm expressing that I'm a little concerned about that to the people who are going to be developing that survey. The other thing I did was you listed some references on your proposal, and one of those cities happens to be a customer of mine. So I called the City Administrator and, you know, asked him a little bit about the work you had done and how much did it cost and some things like that. They're a little bit smaller city than Bel Air, but they had had a full survey done for quite a bit less than $19,000. So the price concerns me a little bit. I want us to spend enough, but, you know, $19,000 is a lot of money. So there really isn't a question in there. I'm just kind of letting you know where I'm at.
Oh, sure.
I'd just like to say, now, I appreciate the way you broke that down into three steps and the cost first. I want to make sure, you know, that it's not just a survey that you're paying for. That's excellent. No, thank you.
No. May I respond, ma'am?
Please.
So first and foremost, I want to commend the council on taking this step, considering the difficult financial challenges that exist, and so we'll certainly appreciate that. Every proposal that we do is customized by the community based upon the request, and so what we try to do is make sure that our services are affordable to the local government, because we would not be here without you. You are a primary customer, and so whatever we do, we respect your time, your resources, and the funds that you have entrusted us with. And so we'll make sure... We can pretty much guarantee there will be no waste, because I'm the finance person on the back end, and so I watch every penny. And then, secondly, in terms of, if I may respond to your question about the types of questions, I... This meeting is being recorded, and I'll make sure that this is shared with the design team, so they can hear exactly what your concerns are, because we... I think these are things that we can address. And also, just knowing as a part of every survey that we do, there are a series of questions, but there's obviously the opportunity for open comment, and so we have received everything from, "Man, this is a great innovative idea," to, "I hate your survey." And so we're used to taking feedback from all types, and so I want you to know who, again, whether it's Joe Smith or Suzie Q., they'll have an opportunity to, like, if they like the question, they can even tell us that we hate your question. And so we will make sure that we want all of the feedback that folks have to provide.
And if I remember right, reading in here, you're going to kind of keep on that, because I also did a little bit of study... I'm sorry, Mayor, should I ask?
Go ahead.
The percentages of responses that you're going to kind of keep on people until you get that.
Yes.
And if people just flat out don't respond, you're going to replace them with more people.
Yes, we can expand the pool as necessary. What we do is we use the voter database to randomly select, or we use water, like water bills, or something where we could get a mass, you know, an aggregate of people. And then what happens is they're a part of the sample size, and so if they don't respond the first time, we send out reminders and say, "Hey, did you get your survey? You had a time?" And then if we're not as persistent enough, we start calling you and just asking questions. And so we've been fairly successful. And actually, what we try to do is blanket the community in that group so that we can make sure that we get to that survey number. So we over-sample to make sure that we get the proper response rate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. On your survey assessment, you answered the first question I was going to have of how are you going to randomly pick those? So you're going to use the voter survey, and then you're also going to use our water. Are you customers?
Yeah, it'd be either, or we would determine which list with the manager. Who's going to give us the broadest list to choose from, but that's how... that's what methodology has been done in the past.
Right.
Or you may have something new here that we...
Well, no, I'm saying, are you going to pick out then of that database, like a demographic of all the different age breakdown? Is that how you're doing that?
We don't select. We don't select at all.
You just say, "Okay, I'm going to pick this house, this house, this house," right?
Yes, based upon, yeah, demographic information. The information related to the person is completely...
Right, okay.
Random to us.
So how many are you thinking you're going to send out?
About 2,500.
2,500?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, that's a good number.
Any other questions, comments?
I would just like to say I'm really pleased to see that you're doing this, and 2,500 is a very large sample.
It is, yes, it is.
So that's good. That should give us a real good idea to get a pulse of what the people are thinking here. And I just have to say that we did a study like this for a communication task force a number of years ago. I was the chair of it. I know how much work it is, and I'm willing to pay the money to somebody else do it. We had 40 people on the task force, and we had at least two people from every single neighborhood in the city of Bel Air, and all those volunteers worked so hard and really did a wonderful job, and that is how the Bel Air Breeze was born in the city of Bel Air. So it was very fruitful for that and a number of other results from that work that we did. But it is a lot of work, and so I'm glad you're doing it.
And one thing as it relates to cost that we try to do is we use our graduate assistants that we're training to be community leaders as a part of the process, because it's an integrated approach, and so they're citizens as well. We want to make sure that they're prudent with resources, but that's also something that we do as a cost-saving measure, but also because we supervise them so closely to make sure things are as they should. That's something we try to do to make sure that we keep our costs in line with what the community can support.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I think it tells us isn't something we'll take lightly up here, and like I said, we want to keep the current residents and continue to attract families here. And again, like I said, last time we did this was a number of years ago with volunteers, and hearing everything, I'm just going to say it, sure beats the heck out of posting a Facebook question to see, again, as Bel Air, you know, we just celebrated a big birthday not that long ago, and as we look to the next 35 years, I think this is a prudent... And again, tell the residents and to tell those listening at home, when you hear this number of 19,000, you might be going, "Oh, my goodness." This is not something... We may not do this again for another decade, but again, seeking that public input and the scientific method is the goal here. So thank you so much for being here. If there's no other questions, we'll let you get home to...
Watch this.
Yeah, cheer them on for us.
Thank you so much for your time. It's been an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'd just like to ask if this is something I'd like to encourage the council to move forward and approve this action this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the citizen survey and engagement proposal with WSU and authorize the mayor to sign. Second?
I have a first and second. Are there any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. This is exciting to get that citizens' input and see what they want. Thank you so much, and we look forward to hearing from... Who'd you call it? John Smith and Suzie Q.? We'll look forward to that. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to our next item, which is property and liability insurance. The city utilizes ICI Insurance Agency to identify companies able to provide... This is property and liability insurance, which as a city is something we have to have. Lonnie Carrier is here to go over the proposals that he received for this year. And so I'd like to invite you to come up and tell us about the different companies and plans and...
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you guys having us out here. Insurance obviously isn't as exciting as some of the other items that you guys have going on, but I do know why you're the smartest in the state. You got a young man that was in the seventh grade thinking about, you know, being a city manager, whatever he was thinking about. I'm sure I wasn't thinking about that.
That was my thought in the seventh grade, though.
Not even close, but I don't know whether we have the overview. Did you want to start with the coverage page, Ty, that you've already... that everybody's got in front of them, or do you want to start with the presentation?
Okay. Well, in terms of the city of Bel Air, we are excited to be here and appreciate the privilege to work with you folks. We actually, in historical perspective, began working with the city of Bel Air back in the founding days. So I actually took the privilege to invite the gentleman back from retirement that came over here and wrote the insurance on the city of Bel Air, Jim Clennan, came out with me and...
Nice to see you all.
Thank you.
This is just a marvelous facility. I came over here in 1983.
That's right.
Wasn't a lot here.
We had all wheat fields, didn't we?
And that's the great thing, is we've seen change, but it's always continued to grow and prosper and be a great city. And I also brought Scott came in, who's, you know, a part of the past and a part of the future there for ICI. But in terms of what you're seeing up there, what we try to do with insurance is draw a line or a fence around your assets and set it up so that there's nobody that's able to come in and take those assets or get, you know, whether it's the city or whether it's you guys as council members, able to get into those assets from the outside through a liability, you know, situation, or from your property exposures that might not be covered. So just to give you kind of that graphic, that's what we try to do, and it may vary which carrier we go with, but with all of them, we want to make sure that we're protecting those assets and having the right policies in place. So let's see, I guess I'm the one moving that thing off. Let me move through here real quick. ICI has been doing public entity business since Jim was just a pup in... back in the, what, 60s, Jim?
Sixty-two.
Yeah. Anyway, that's... And so our agency has a lot of experience in that realm, and you'll see that as we move through here a little bit. Our mission, committed to serving the needs of you, the client, the highest priority is to protect your assets and help manage your total cost of risk. We understand that integrity and respect are critical elements of the business relationship, a path for success. This is what we've done to partner with you guys in order to find the best program for you. You know, in terms of service, we have a team approach, whereas, you know, sometimes it'll be, this gets passed off and passed off and passed off to somebody that's not really out here dealing with your organization. We keep it... I've been... Jim was on this account when it was written in 80, and then the next one was me. So it's just a consistency of staying with you guys and keeping that service level along with our account managers and whoever else that knows your, you know, knows your organization well. And then the service staff, and, you know, I can let Ty speak to some of that, or others in terms of the relationship, but it's been very good. We always try to get ID cards out same day, answer questions, you know, can we allow certain things to go on with the city if they want to borrow the, you know, park facilities, whatever those kind of cases are. Our staff has a lot of experience in dealing with that because of the number of entities that we handle in the public realm. And you can see our staff, approximately 24. We always try to stay up to date on everything in terms of coverages, et cetera, and always trying to learn and improve ourselves. The public entity specialists, this is what you've got in your packet, but I've been doing public entities for more than 40 years, have 90 cities, schools, counties, rural water districts, townships, and fire districts, and they're all similar in nature in terms of the coverages and programs that you have to put together for those types of entities. The 96% of them stay with us. We retain those, and then we have, in the agency, 250 years of combined agency experience in risk management and city. And then we build strong relationships with those carriers. So the ones that you're looking at tonight, Travelers, One Beacon, you know, we continue strong relationships with the carriers that will look at your type of business, you know. Not every insurance carrier rates what you guys are looking for in terms of coverage. And then the last thing there, we're among the top five property and casualty brokers in the Wichita area, and we're the largest that's locally owned. So there's national brokers in town, but we're the largest in the metro area. Then you go to the program analysis. These are the things that we've done for this renewal, written summaries, submitted them to the insurance carriers that we felt were the best, negotiated pricing with those. That doesn't mean we share the pricing from others. We look at the coverages and we, you know, how much you have on this building or that building and determine if the coverages match the pricing and those kinds of things. So we're comparing same for same when we're doing this stuff, as opposed to just, you know, "Well, here's a low price. Well, what does that actually mean?" So... And then, once again, coordinated to premium comparison, and we sat down with Ty and Michelle and went through completely the coverages, line for line, whether it was your, you know, the public officials' liability that protects you guys, or any of those lines of coverage, to make sure that the carriers that we're looking at have the coverages that need to be in... that we're looking at have the, the coverages that need to be in place, and it's, and how does that compare across those three. So, a very important part of the process, because you guys know, sometimes you can buy something you think's cheaper, and it's going to be a good deal, and it's not always. So, program analysis, in, in the years that we've written you guys, there weren't many carriers, because of your size, starting off small and growing, there weren't many carriers. EMC is one, has always written small to big, really, and, but they have an office in Wichita. They have about 200 employees down here. That's where a lot of their claims representatives are. They know the, the municipal business in Kansas, and so that's, they're the ones that write the majority of the cities, the majority of the schools, and the majority of the counties in the state of Kansas. But as the market goes up and down, the pricing, you get into a hard market, carriers don't want to write tough risks. When it gets into a softer market, some will write it. We're in a little bit of a softer market right now, and that means that carriers are willing to take a look at, and you guys have grown. So, it's, that's why we've got some proposals from Travelers and from One Beacon that we're willing to, probably wouldn't have written you in the past. I mean, every time I'd ask, they, they were really not that interested. But anyway, you can see we do a market search. The ones at the top, EMC, Travelers, One Beacon, are the ones that handle you guys. K-Met is your work comp carrier, which you guys know very well. And the, the others, you know, we can get some things from Zurich, but not so much on cities. They're done in schools right now, but not cities. But anyway, that's the markets that we go searching to, to get coverage for you. And then this is just a, a couple of cities that gave us recommendations on here. If, if you guys ever need to visit with somebody about our reputation or who we work with, those kind of things, I can get you those or from others. But the last thing, Jim said 83. I was thinking it was, we had written it since 1980, but it's, it's close. It's either 30, 33, 36 years. You maybe haven't been in the city since 36 years. You said it was 35 years?
Nineteen eighty.
As of November, yeah. So, but we, we certainly appreciate the privilege to work with you guys. It's been a, it's been a fun ride to watch you grow and, and go through a lot of the changes. And then, you know, as we've worked with you guys, you know, Ty and Michelle and whoever's handling the insurance that's done will call and ask, you know, what does this do to our insurance program, or what, you know, what is our risk if we go out and do this activity? Now, if we put on a fireworks show, if we do the, and that's, those are the types of, you know, advice and expertise that we try to work with and get. And I haven't met your current attorney, but I know the former attorney, Mr. Lee, was it? His take on EMC was that their coverage in the public entity which protects you guys, public entity official liability is the best around. And he was always very protective of that piece of the business because he knows how important it is to you guys to not end up in a situation, kind of like you were talking about a little bit ago, about what happens if, you know, something, someone comes in and we end up, you know, in a lawsuit because somebody got hurt or injured and we didn't protect them properly. So, a lot of those types of issues, because of the time that EMC has been around, are, is very strong. Now, I will tell you, Travelers is a good carrier, so is One Beacon. And we have cities with all of those companies. So, we would not present them if we didn't feel like they were strong carriers. So, I guess the, if you want to move to the question of what's the best, I, I think Ty pretty well laid out a pretty good case here in, in you're and Michelle's assessment of what is there. A couple of things that went into that assessment, the dividend that EMC has paid consistently throughout the years. And what that is, is you guys go into a dividend program across with all the cities that are with EMC across the state, and if they have a good year, everybody participates back in a dividend. And you guys should be proud that you've gotten those for many, many years and qualified for that. But you got it back, actually almost 10,000 last year in dividends from EMC. And so you have to kind of consider that as part of the pricing mechanism. That puts them right in there with the other carriers, or even ahead of the other carriers. And I think they used a three-year average on that piece of it. The other thing that's significant in there is the deductibles. The deductibles for EMC, and that's kind of on that last page there, I guess, the deductibles for EMC are one single deductible on any event that happens. So, if you have a big hail claim or hail event, and the roof here gets damaged along with the other buildings, as well as a number of police cars and whatever else, there's only one deductible for both of those, actually. And so it's an occurrence deductible. And so it would be a $5,000 deductible on that one case is what we have had. And you can go to a higher deductible, on a wind hail deductible, to 10,000, and you would just pay 10,000. It's kind of, you know, how you, how you budget your money is, is you guys' business. You can decide on a higher deductible, or you can pay it if it happens. So, I guess with that, I'll be quiet and let you guys ask some questions, if you have any. And if Ty, you have some comments to make, it was a very positive process. We don't always get proposals like that, that we can match up line for line from, from carriers on cities, but...
I appreciate...
Thank you.
You laying these out, like those for us. Ty, I thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, are there any questions for Lonnie?
Yes, I do have one. Who does the field audits, in other words, of the buildings and things like that?
EMC has a trained loss control representative, and they, they actually just completed that process on this building. The, when, when the building was initially built, it was easy to value it because it was new, that we, we knew what the cost was. When the carriers move through that process, what they tend to do is add 4% a year approximately for cost increase on that building. And so that's kind of where we've been. Now, the other buildings have actually been loss controlled by EMC people. And like I say, they do schools to every, every type of building. And so what they do is, they actually have, you know, they go by GPS marking off the actual size of the building, taking everything, and then they, they put it into their computers and say, this is how much it should be, this is how much you should have in contents. And so it's very well orchestrated in terms of how much those costs should be. Now, in terms of the, this building, like I say, that had not been done specifically on this building. So, the underwriter, when we were asking about it this month, said, you know, why don't we go ahead and get a loss control guy out here? And so I think Ty, he, he came out here recently, did he not, did that? So, but the other ones have already been done, like on the pool house and that kind of thing. So, they just didn't have it on this one.
And you, you don't, how often do they do that?
It can be done as often as we request it. It's, it's more of a, if you, if you think you have an issue. And, and the question you raise is a good one. I mean, if you have a, I guess, because we've been in it so long, the amount of, that we'll see, we can, you know, kind of compare one building to another, to another, to, you know, various, across our entities. But in terms of, you, you see those circumstances, like up at Chapman, where the school was greatly uninsured. And, you know, of course, Jim's from Chapman, and we, we had a big conversation about that. But, but no, that's, that's always part of the process, is we always try to look at, and especially on anything new that we're looking at, that we, we go through that. And, and we can do a cost estimator internally in our system. And those are okay, but it's all kind of computer. It's not as accurate as, as somebody like a trained representative from EMC coming in here and walking the building, making sure. The one issue we had was the, what was the wind resistance on this building when we first insured it? And we were able to get the wind resistance rating where we wanted it, based on how it was tied in. The, the other issue was with the wood, I think it's got wood ceiling joists, if I'm not mistaken, which, you know, could potentially create more of a fire hazard. So, but we were able to get through that as well when that, when that was built. But it's, you know, that's a very good question. Certainly want to make sure that you always have those values where they need to be. So, anything else that somebody has a question on? And these other carriers have those resources as well, if you were wondering. Travelers has loss control or building valuation resources, same with One Beacon.
Well, thank you so much for being here.
I, I will say one other thing on that. The nice thing about EMC's, they're, if you saw the blanket limit, and I don't know whether that was included on the page that you see, the blanket limit that EMC has, and of course, I believe it was Travelers has a limit on outdoor property. They, they were, they would not provide a, let me double check that. No, One Beacon has a limit on, it's, their outdoor property is not in a blanket limit. And so what that means is, is if you left an item off, then you're out in the cold. Whereas the EMC program has a blanket limit for, and you can see, it's a, it's like a seven man, $800,000 limit on the property blanket, so that if you're, if you accidentally left something off, or it was too low of value, it can be borrowed from the other, from the other limits on some of those other buildings, or, or outdoor property, et cetera. Ty, anything that you had to add to that that needed to be brought up?
Um, no. I think you did a good job covering it. If the council has any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer those. But basically, the, what we have now is, on that chart, the EMC, all the way to the left is what we currently have. So, if we were to stay with that same program or, or same policy, we're looking at roughly 88,000. And then on the second page is, is where you get into the deductible. It would have a $5,000 deductible. And of course, when we, was it a year ago, we had the wind storm and stuff, and got all new roofs and things. That was very beneficial to have that low of a, of a deductible. Now, we could go, we could stick with EMC and go with a higher deductible, which would be a 10,000 deductible. And of course, that would lower our annual fee by, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of $8,000. So, but the concern we had about Travelers and One Beacon was not just what Lonnie had mentioned, but the fact that they really jumped, you know, Travelers is 20,000, One Beacon's 45,000. And for the savings of, well, actually, from what we have, it's, it's a few thousand dollars to have that kind of deductible. We wouldn't recommend that. So, we'd like, we've had a good relationship with EMC, and so we'd be comfortable with, you know, either of the EMC proposals that you felt would be appropriate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a comment to make. It's stated that EMC is going to charge 88,164, and Travelers 84, and One Beacon 89. But neither of the other companies give dividends. And last year, we received a dividend of close to $10,000. So, that makes their, their cost $78,000. It makes them the cheapest on the, of the three companies. And so I would like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we accept the insurance proposals from EMC and authorize the mayor to sign.
Which one?
Yeah, do we need to say the...
The 10,000. You said the amount.
The five, the 5,000 or 10,000?
I think the current, I'm, I'm going to recommend the current amount.
I agree. Second.
Okay.
Which is the 88,164 that we have with it. That's including the dividend, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. And a motion from Councilwoman McDonald, and a second, I think, Councilwoman Becker. Okay, do that. All, any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much for spelling all that out for us.
Well, just be thankful we didn't go into all the different policies. We'd have been here all night.
That's why we have a staff. At this point, I'd actually like to ask council, I'm going to ask our attorney, I don't know if we need a formal action, but item G, Tim Austin is in the audience. Instead of making him wait through the other agenda items, can we have, speak to item G now and go back to the rest? We can do that informally, can we not, without the council's consent?
I don't know.
Okay. Let's go ahead, and if you don't mind, Mr. Austin, I'd just like to respect your time and appreciate you. That way you don't have to wait through the rest of everything. But the city owns the northwest corner of 45th and Rock. There's actually two parcels on that corner. The first is that hard corner, and the second is behind it. And that contains the floodplain that we've talked about at a couple of different times here. In order to sell that back parcel and come up with a fair market value, the city needs to determine the exact, I mean, like down to the foot, amount of floodplain that's there, which is why our engineer, Tim Austin, is here to share what the proposal entails and answer any questions before we take action on that. So, Mr. Austin, I'd like to invite you up to the podium, if there's anything I'd like to speak to on that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and council members, and be quick in recognition of your time as well. So, the proposal in front of you is to remove, look at removing the land from the floodplain. Many of you may be aware, we have old flood maps that were done in 2007, or in the process of being updated, but it's still in a state of approval, and we think it might be either late this year or early next year. There is some interest in the real estate community on that particular tract. But one of the difficulties is, is determining what, what part of that tract is actually usable and can be removed from the floodplain. And so the process that we were suggesting is what we call CLO MarF. It's a conditional letter of map revision based on fill. And what that does is we draw up some plans showing how the land can be recovered, how it relates to the studied floodplain that is being done by Division of Water Resources right now, and submit that for approval. Once that gets approved, then we'll know with specificity from DWR and from FEMA, how much of that land is actually usable. That way the city knows how much that they can actually sell. And the second component of that is looking at how much dirt work is actually necessary to fill it and bring that out of the floodplain. We've done some rough calculations, at least initially, but as we go through more of a final design, we can establish that quantity and get some pricing from some contractors to have a pretty hard figure as to those cost inputs into the land, to make, to make it something that you can sell and pull a building permit on. With that, I know that's rather quickly cut it in a nutshell, but be happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a comment. I was in a meeting with this gentleman and the person that wants to buy that particular property. And I was impressed with the buyer, as I, as I've said in the past. So, I, I'm in complete agreement with this consideration, and I'm impressed with the quality of engineering that I, that I witnessed.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the engineering agreement with the Cal-Belly Engineering and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second. Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, let's move back to item C then. And again, just for those people, for those watching at home, this is something we kind of discuss as a council when we have someone waiting in the audience, while it's further up in the agenda, just so that we don't have them waiting in the house for everything else. So, all right. So, item C is council meeting rules of order. We've used Robert's Rules as our basis for a long, long time. The council requested adopting... Uh, uh, council requested adopting Bob's Rules as created by Bob Myers, um, from Newton. Um, and we've had a lot of discussion and a lot of different workshops, um, on this. The policy is before council for consideration. Just wanted to see if council was ready to adopt this policy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm just delighted that we're doing this, because I think it's a big improvement and will be helpful to everybody. I do have two little things. The first one is very minor, and it's, uh, a little change that I think we should make, just to be consistent, under the C elaboration of procedural basics. Uh, in the third item there, there is a, still a person in that sentence that should be changed from person to member. Recognize members entitled to the floor and equitably allow title, time for each person. When we're referring to council members, uh, we've tried to be consistent throughout here and use the term member. So that was one person that was left in there that should be changed to member, I think. That's really pretty minor. And then the only other thing I saw that hadn't really, um, adhered to, to Bob's Rules, which I think is a more important thing that we need to put back in there, on that same section, item number seven, it says cause removal from the assembly of any person who persists in failing to abide by the final orders of the chair. I think we should add the phrase after having been verbally warned. That was in the original, uh, Bob's Rules of Order, and so I suggest that we put that back in there, because it is nice to get a warning.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that was probably just left out by mistake, and I think I may have actually done that myself, so.
So, so your change, um, I, number seven, and I'm sorry, tell me the, the first one.
And then we made that number eight then, under number seven, since we took out, it jumps to ten.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then change number ten.
To eight.
Number eight, yeah, okay.
Under seven. Thank you for catching that, I appreciate that.
She wants that, this. She wants it all in number seven?
No.
No, 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 no. Number ten is going to change to number eight.
Mm-huh. Under number seven.
But where's she adding after verbally warned?
On seven.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
It, it would be, it would go after the word persists, you would just add the phrase persists, comma, after having been verbally warned, comma.
And again, for those at home, this is something we have gone over several times, so this is why we're trying to make sure it's all.
This is a lot of wordsmithing, but that's part of it, you know?
Yep, yep. But if we're down just those final changes, and...
Those are the only two changes I saw, and number three, thank you.
Yeah.
For noticing, that should have been number eight instead of ten.
What actually the council like to take tonight on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the amendments Dr. Becker put in, uh, the council meeting rules of order as pre, as amended, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Do I need to say the amendments you asked for?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah, first and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, next, tax law resolution. Um, this is something I'm kind of passionate about with having, um, local control. During the state legislative session, uh, last year, our legislators adopted a law that required any tax increase above the CPI to require a vote of the citizens. Um, the law had several issues relating to elections, timelines, implementation, uh, legislate George now, legislature, excuse me, is now looking at removing some exemptions and moving up implementation to, uh, twenty seventeen next year, so. Um, and we talked about this at the workshop, that council and I feel this legislation is an assault on local government control of their own budgets. And, uh, just like to say that again, that I do, I feel this is an assault on local government and those of us up here elected, uh, to make these decisions, um, here, which is in the best interest of the city. REB is suggested, suggesting, or has suggested that all municipalities approve a resolution calling for the appeal of the tax lid, and, and like I said, we talked about this at the workshop, and I would, uh, strongly encourage council that we, uh, do so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion to approve a resolution for repeal of tax lid. Bel Air is a member of the Regional Economic Area Partnership, a regional organization whose members represent twenty-six local governments in south central Kansas, and supporting repeal of the tax lid. Be it resolved that Bel Air request reconsideration of House Bill two-one-zero-nine and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to echo your remarks, I feel very strongly about this, and I think it's very important that we do this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is consideration of accepting a proposal from Waste Management for Waste Connections for recycling and solid waste removal, uh, within our city limits. Um, I know, uh, since two thousand and two, uh, we've contracted, the city has, with a preferred service provider, uh, for trash and recycling. The first contractor we used was Stutzman, uh, but then Waste Connections purchased Stutzman's. The current agreement expires in May, uh, so staff felt it be appropriate to go, uh, send out RFPs, and I commend, uh, staff for doing that, kinda like with the insurance. It's good to always look and see that we're getting the best deals or, and the best service. Uh, Jamie Hayes, our city utility clerk, um, is here to go over the results, and I'd like to invite, uh, her to come up and kind of share. Again, it's something that we did discuss, uh, at the workshop again, so, which is why it's on the agenda tonight. Jamie?
Okay. Um, so like the mayor said, we sent out RFPs regarding new solid waste haulers in single stream recycling. Um, some background that the mayor already provided, is that we've been doing this since two thousand and two. Um, currently, we are with Waste Connections, who bought out Stutzman's a few years ago. Um, in our time with Waste Connections, we've moved on to the single stream recycling. It used to be we would provide trash bags, and citizens would have to bag and sort their recyclables and set it out by the curb. Um, with the single stream, they don't have to do that anymore, they just throw it all in the bin, everybody loves it. Um, we've always left it that citizens are free to choose whoever they want for their trash service. Um, if they don't want to go with the city's option, then they can choose whoever, but the recycling is mandatory, it's mandatory charge. Um, they don't have to recycle if they don't want to, but they'll still be charged for it, and that's actually, um, an ordinance that we have. Um, so our, the, out of the RFPs, we sent sixteen out, and we got two back. So, that's not, you know. Uh, we did have goals that we wanted each of the haulers to meet, and it was providing both the ninety-five gallon cart and the sixty-five gallon cart. Um, we have roughly two hundred people in town with the sixty-five gallon cart, the smaller cart. It does save a couple dollars every month. Um, it's just for people who don't produce a lot of trash and don't need the bigger, bulkier cart. Um, we want them to provide weekly trash pickup, bi-weekly recycling pickup, um, one shred event per year. Also, we added in, we have usually just one citywide cleanup a year, but we're, we want to do two, because people always ask, when is it, when is it? Oh, I missed it, so, having two of them would really benefit the citizens. And also provide, um, portable restrooms, as well as extra trash receptacles at city Here's kind of the monthly price breakdown, um, for additional carts. Right now, Waste Management, they're offering additional trash and recycle carts at eight dollars a cart. Uh, Waste Connections would offer it at five dollars or three twenty-five. Um, Waste Management, you can have five extra bags if you fill up the ninety-five gallon cart, not the smaller sixty-five gallon cart. With that, you cannot have additional bags. Uh, Waste Connections offers up to three additional bags. The main difference, they both do the single stream recycling, except for Waste Connections offers rewards for it. Um, a lot of people are enrolled in the recycle bank program, so they can get the coupons and gift cards for the recycling. Uh, Waste Management, they don't offer a rewards program, they kind of just educate people more about recycling. And then, number of days closed for holidays, uh, Waste Management has six, Waste Connections has three, which basically, if your trash day is on Christmas, they'll pick it up the next day. These are the contracts that we were offered, the price options. Um, Waste Management, they only offered a five-year option. Waste Connections offered us a five, seven, or ten-year option. And then, allowing us to contract with a company, as you can see, gives lower prices to people. Um, most cities who don't have like a program like this, their residents are, you know, forced to pay whatever that trash company is offering them, which can be two to three times more than what they would pay through the city. Um, and also, it allows them to keep the single stream recycling. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I have a question for Councilwoman Winn, who is primarily responsible for the recycling in Bel Air.
Good.
And, um, I would like to hear your opinion of Waste Connections. Uh, I'm, you're familiar with.
Yes, I am.
With Waste Management, and I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Well, uh, prior to the finalization of the two thousand and two, um, you know, getting that started, um, they were very nasty to the city, they sued the city, and they sued me as a private citizen.
Who was "they"?
"They" was Waste Connections.
Okay, good.
However, I hold no hard feelings now, okay? Um, trash haulers are who they are, they're trash haulers, and, um, you know, so, uh, they are doing a thankless job, um, and they learned something from that lawsuit. They were not successful with that lawsuit, and I think they learned something with that lawsuit. I, however, keep a sharp eye on them and what they do, uh, and I have a couple of suggestions whenever that time becomes available, um, kind of thing. Allison's chuckling at me. So, um, I have no problem with them. Um, the, the recycle bank i- is a whole lot less than it was when it became a thing. Um, mostly, you get coupons and what have you, and most of them are short-term, but it is what it is. So, um, you know, um, it, it's better than nothing, okay? I mean, I've got a five dollar off for a restaurant that I got the other day, so, you know, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Could you re, Mr. Mayor? Could you remind the citizens how to do that recycle bank, get their coupons? Somebody asked me the other day, they just go on and create an account?
Yeah, they go on and create an account, and if you forget your password, which most of us have ninety-nine passwords to keep track of, so we always do.
It's a new app for that.
(laughing). I, I have struggled with it because, um, you're supposed to be able to print your own coupons off, and I have tried it on numerous printers that I have, and it won't print on any of them. And so, uh, like the coupon I have, I just had them mail it to me, which is the option. Uh, and so, I don't know if somebody out there knows how to print those coupons, call me up and tell me, um, you know, kind of thing.
I would say, I actually printed off a few of those, and, and now, um, with my bank, hit a button, put on your smartphone, take that up, and they just scan it, and you can get your buy one, get one. Um, and we've done a few activities that way, so, but they should. Um, I will take with the printer, I've noticed this, and I'm getting way over my head here, but there's this whole Google Chrome thing that's doing different things, maybe try Internet Explorer.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's usually not that important in my life, I'll try all the printers around the office, if it doesn't print on any of those, why, I'll just have them mail it to me, so, um, but, but there are some other things that you can negotiate with them. Do I, do you want me to go on? I mean, this is more.
I just have a question for Jamie when you're done, so go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, um, I spoke with my friend, the city administrator customer slash, you know, uh, kind of thing, because they use Waste Connections, and I bluntly asked him, what do you pay? And what, how many years is your contract and what have you? Their contract is a five-year contract, and they pay ten dollars and thirty-six cents for the ninety-five, uh, gallon trash cart. They put an option in, three seventy-five for the recycle cart. They have an option of a five-year contract with an option to come back and renew for five more years, but they could adjust the price or something like that. They also offer that, uh, community, um, they give the city themselves, uh, some coupons that can be awarded to citizens for any reason they want to award that. I mean, when they first started that, it was recycler of the month, but I think now that they've kind of gone to the conglomerated weighing of the recycling, that's out the window. But, um, you know, they give a coupon worth a month's free for something. I mean, um, you know, we, we've given some plaques and things, certificates up here, and America can them maybe a month free on, on that. Now, that'd be up to you, because it would, it would, you know, kind of eat into profitability. That city also, uh, bills on their water bill as well, so they do the billing like we do. Um, but one of the things I liked was, they have senior discount. If you're a senior, the price is eight ninety-three per month. Now, this is, I should say, this is the city's cost. This is the other town you're talking about? Yeah.
And how old do you have to be to be a senior?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
Yes, that's legal.
I'm a senior in ten minutes.
Right?
Yeah.
That's the arm.
I think that would be decided. Fifty-five is usually the number that they tell you for seniors.
Yeah.
So my understanding of this is, is that we're accepting basically the proposal, and then you and Allison will finalize, and so these are some suggestions that I have. And I had asked you if you knew, uh, what another city was paying, because they had the lowest that I know of, lower than this. So I'm saying push. Uh, not necessarily push, uh, but, you know, there's some wiggle room in here, and...
But if we go with the ten-year plan, we're actually lower than the numbers you were just saying, right?
Yeah. Well, the, the reason you don't want to go for a ten-year pan, plan is, is that everybody's going to be locked into it unless you're for cause, or, you know, um, depending on what the cancellation targets would be. They just use the option type of thing.
At these rates, I'm all for blocking the ten years.
I am too. I thought if, we discussed it at the workshop.
I thought we said the workshop and wiped out.
No? No, I, I don't, but it's okay, you know, I'm not gonna throw Jesse Bell over. You know, I'm not going to throw Jesse Bell over.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, sorry.
Well, like I said, I, as a businessperson, I do not believe in 10-year contracts. Okay, three years, five years max. And, but when I ask this city, and they offer the option, you know, of renewing the contract. Now, with an option, you can renegotiate the pricing. I mean, we don't know what gas prices are going to do for the next week, let alone for the next five years, or 10 years. And I'll guarantee you that if you do a 10-year, and gas goes up to five bucks a gallon, or eight bucks a gallon, or something, you're going to have negotiations going again. And that's why I say I wouldn't, I wasn't in favor of the long term. I am saying that you probably can get that 10-year pricing if you negotiate it correctly with an option.
Do you know how many customers this other city had?
Less than we do.
Less than we do? Okay, that's good to know.
Mr. Mayor? Well, I want to thank Jamie and the rest of the staff for all the hours you spent on this. And the reason that I really liked Waste Connection was because they did offer that. And I understand what you're saying from a business standpoint. However, this is something, I can guarantee you, that we all are going to continue to need, is trash service. It's not like something that you might say, well, this might phase out like other things do. And we do have the option, too, that we can also break this contract. What was, what is the thing on that, Jamie? If we don't?
I would have to look it up.
Okay.
I don't.
There's always an option.
There wasn't like a six-month?
There is, yeah. Each of them offer an early termination.
Right, which isn't that long, and I like those prices. And it gives us a little cushion if we take that as we continue to do, because we do our own billing, so she's actually spending work hours, but it gives you that cushion in that fund. So I don't know. When I left the workshop, I was, I was really in favor of doing this, so...
And let me just ask, if council goes ahead, which my recommendation will be to go ahead and go with the 10-year with Waste Connections, I mean, you can still go ahead and ask if we can do a recycle of the month, or if there's further discount.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
I haven't done that in the past.
Or even maybe when new people move in, if you got a coupon, and every so often could say you won the, you know, new resident of the quarter, and you get a free coupon for a free month of trash or something, you know, you could every quarter or something. It's kind of a cool thing.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Well, when we discussed this at the workshop, there were also other benefits that they were going to give the city that we're not getting now. And to my knowledge, any other place that we've ever had didn't give us that.
Correct.
Because they gave us a, they're going to give us a free bathroom for the little Bel Air Park, or porta potty, whatever you call them. We now pay for the two porta potties at Resurrection, at the, I'm sorry, Rec Center, am I not correct? And we wouldn't have to pay for those anymore. And they're going to give us a big roll-off for the maintenance building, and they were going to charge us for the landfill charge, or whatever you call that, but Mr. LaShaw went back and said, no, we want that free. So they're going to give that to us. So there's a lot of other, a lot of options that they're giving us to keep our business. And as far as I know, other than people complaining they come at 6 o'clock in the morning, and put your trash out the night before, and I guess for us retired ones, you just roll over and go back to sleep, but...
I just assumed you'd come at 6:00, and traffic school buses and all that.
And so that's why I was really for Waste Connections, because it's going to make the big break of all this other stuff that they give us free.
Yes.
And then there's a shredding day that they wouldn't charge for, and wasn't there two cleanup days, and it was curbside?
Yep.
Yeah, that's huge.
And that's a huge thing, because a lot of people have to go look for friends that have pickups or something to get rid of their stuff. And there was a deal in that proposal that they would also, like if you had a chair or a van, you could call, and they'd charge you $15 to come pick that up.
A lot cheaper than hauling it off to the dump yourself, so...
Well, I know.
Well, if council's ready to...
Mr. Mayor, I have some comments to make. There's no doubt that Waste Connections wants the business of the city of Bel Air. And they, that's why they've gone out to this 10-year plan. But looking at Waste Management, Waste Management says, no, we can't go seven years, we can't go 10 years. It sounds like the management of Waste Management, which are, well, call them relatively small businesses, they're, they're more in accord with reality. And no one, no small business can offer a 10-year plan and expect to hold to it, because there are so many unknowns during that period of time. A reasonable amount of time for something like this would be three years, five years, in my opinion. So I will not vote for the 10-year plan, but I will vote for Waste Connections.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo the sentiment that I think the staff did a great job on this, and Jamie, you did an exceptional job on getting all the facts and everything we need to make a good decision about this. And I'd also like to say, I think it's so wonderful that we have members on the council that are knowledgeable and have background in a lot of the areas that we have before us. And so I really appreciate your expertise on this, Diane, and also, I think Betty has a lot of experience, too, and knowledge of how things have gone in the past, which helps us, because sharing that with the rest of us, that's very helpful. So I think we're very fortunate, and again, Jamie especially, I know you put a lot of work in on this. I appreciate what you said about the seven-year contract, perhaps, that's, that's something that I agree with. I do think Waste Connections is offering us so very much with the porta potties and all the extra days of shredding, the large item disposal, which is just fantastic for people that don't have trucks in the family. So I, I'm definitely in favor of going with them. And I do think it would be good for, to go ahead and approve this tonight, and then let the staff try to negotiate some of these other possibilities with them.
Mr. Mayor? I appreciate what Mr. McDonald said. However, because Jamie said that we could do a six-month cancellation, I appreciate Betty saying that, all the things that she remembered from the workshop we were getting besides this, it doesn't make sense to me that we wouldn't do the 10-year and save our citizens $1.50 a month, when so many of them are always saying they're looking for a cut there or wherever, and if we don't go with that one, we're going to have to raise their prices. So if, is it okay, is everybody ready for a motion, or do you have more questions?
Very good.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to accept the proposal from Waste Connections for a 10-year agreement, and direct staff to enter into contract negotiations.
Second.
First and second, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I think we could do that with the, with the, in the negotiation of the actual contract approximately the same way I said, a five-year with a five-year option.
But...
And you can get the 10-year price at that point in time.
If, if they're willing to do that, but I don't want to charge our citizens for me, unless we want to table this and do this next meeting.
No, we've got a...
I know, I know I already have the motion, but I'm saying if you would want to not vote for it and do it, I don't feel comfortable not locking down a price for our citizens and making them pay $1.50 more a month, when they could...
Yeah, I mean, they're guaranteeing for 10 years.
They're guaranteeing that price. So, I mean, I, I'm, yeah, I understand what you're saying. You're saying you'll renegotiate it.
Well, you gave it with the renegotiations to Mr. LaShaw.
Yeah.
So right now, we have a motion to accept the proposal, because again, this contract's going to expire in May, with Waste Connections for a 10-year price locked in, which is less than we're paying now. And again, with, for some reason, we needed to negotiate again with the six-month to get out. So, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor? Well, with these prices that they've quoted for 10 years, that doesn't necessarily mean the residence price is going to go down.
Correct.
Because we have to balance in there the staff's time, and if we have to buy a new program, as sometime within these 10 years, because they use, they could use that money. But their prices for trash and recycling wouldn't go up.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay.
Very good clarification.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor? I, I, you know, I really agree with Councilwoman Wynne's presentation on that. There is no doubt that over a 10-year period, there are going to be negotiations after negotiations when the factors change, and the factors are going to change over a 10-year period, because no one can predict what's going to happen over a 10-year period. It's just impossible. So it's, it's bad, it's bad management on their part, in my opinion. But it's obvious that they want the business, and I'm in favor of giving it to them, but not for, done on the 10-year basis.
Let me go ahead and call for the vote on a motion, which is to accept, again, a reminder everybody at home, the proposal from Waste Connection for a 10-year agreement, directing the staff to enter into contract negotiations, which we talked about tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passed, three to two. Next is consideration of approving an addendum to the chapel landing, which is Irongate. Developers of Irongate, guys, this is another great thing. They're ready to move into Phase Two already, which, my goodness, didn't they just start building? I mean, but these are patio homes along Wood Lawn. Developers agreement requires a certificate of occupancy to be issued on 35% of the lots before 35% letter credit is released. The developer now has 35% of the lots under construction, but the COs aren't issued the certificates of occupancy. So they're requesting 35% letter of credit be released, so they can use that money for installation of Phase Two infrastructure. Staff did create an addendum, which follows the same rules like the city of Wichita has and everything. So again, this is just, kind of just making sure that we're comfortable with this, that, you know, it's there on this, you know, this is, again, a positive thing. I think since they want to start the next phase, do want to point out that our, I know our city attorney has reviewed this, so that is before council tonight, if they're moving, if they're comfortable, if you guys are comfortable moving forward on the addendum.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make an motion to approve the addendum to this chapel landing developers agreement and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sign.
Item G, we've already covered, which brings us to discussion and future issues. I don't have any to bring up at this point, or just to remind council, if you could email names to me that you'd like to have on that committee for our history, and if anybody has evaluations for our city manager. So the council member, like I said, in the appointment, to go over those. Just a general reminder, on our general session. But that's all that I have. Is there anything else?
Just have a good Easter.
Well, we need a motion to...
You need a...
We don't...
You're not going to have executive session?
No. Well, there will be a land bank meeting after this, which will, which is going to be what the executive session.
Mr. Mayor? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second to adjourn. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Let's take a five-minute break.